The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, November 20th. It is 7:00 PM. I will ask you to stand for the pledge led by Councilman Cox, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have any presentations or public hearings, so the first item is minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes of October 16th, 2017, regular meeting and November 13th, 2017 organizational meeting.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight? Probably not. It's your first meeting, so. I do have, not an report, but I'm going to read some information that I received.
She says your microphone's not working, Kathy.
Yes, they're working. I'm sorry?
Maybe you can bend it down, she can't hear you.
Okay, I'll sit closer. I'll speak louder. Okay, first report I would like, I'll do this second. First report that I have this evening, I received an email from Lois Robitali. My apologies if that is not the correct pronunciation. She wrote she's unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please address her concerns on this matter. My name is Lois Robitali. I live at 50 Pierce Street. I'm opposed to the trail because of safety and privacy issues which have already been addressed to the council. So it's red. Does anybody else have anything to report tonight? Okay. Moving on to appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Charlotte Plitis to the Plainville-Southampton Regional Health District Board for the term ending June 20th, 2020.
Second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Timothy Maynard, 141 Hollyberry Lane, as an alternate member to the Economic Development Agency for the term ending August 7th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of David Thompson from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If we could, send a letter of thanks to Mr. Thompson. I know he's been on that commission a long time, was a valuable member, and thanking him for all of his hard work and dedication.
Will do.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Andrew Chapman as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending January 2nd, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Robert Massolero, 110 Arcadia Avenue, as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the term ending October 5th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight for any boards? None? Thank you. Next item on our list is the Board of Education liaison. I was sent some updates from the board by Deb Hardy, the vice chair. On Friday, November 17th, seven BoE members attended a Cabe Caps convention. It consisted of vendors, various workshops, and guest speakers. The Board of Education also received a Cabe Leadership Award. We attended a session about Makerspace and video game design. This was facilitated by Dave Gagnard and Deb Paquille. Also, the middle school VEX robotics team, under the direction of Camille Westfall and Laurel Schwartz, demonstrated their skills and displayed their many trophies. Have a happy Thanksgiving from the Board of Ed. Report of the town attorney. Do we have a report tonight?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next is report of the town manager, Mr. Lee. You have a number of items for us tonight.
I do, I do. The first item is some discussion on the state budget. The state budget adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor would reduce state aid to Plainville by $1,033,720 from what was anticipated in the town council budget. Major reductions were made to ECS, Education Cost Sharing Grant, approximately $958,000 or minus 8.9%. And the elderly circuit breaker reimbursements by $150,000. They basically eliminated the reimbursement for that program. At Plainville, that's an additional $150,000. Last Friday, the governor announced that he was making further reductions to the state aid to municipalities, which he called holdbacks. These holdbacks further reduced state aid to Plainville by an additional $870,285, bringing the total reductions to $1,904,005. This is a reduction of 16.27% from what was anticipated in the spring as it relates to state aid. Educational cost grant reduction alone is $1,823,324, representing 96% of the loss in revenues for Plainville. The loss of revenues represents 1.38 mils, which is equivalent to a 4.2% tax increase. Towns that adopted a budget or levied taxes for the current year before the state adopted its budget, i.e. Plainville and others, may change their education budgets and levies if the state budget provides less state aid than the municipality projected. Any reduction of the education budget could not exceed the loss in the ECS. For Plainville, as I stated earlier, the ECS loss is $1.8 million. At this point in time, the town council can consider the following options to address the significant decrease in state aid. The town council can reduce spending allotments in the current fiscal year, including reducing the education budget. The town council can adjust the tax levy for the January second half tax bills. You can cover the loss with the use of unassigned fund balance or any combination of those If adjustments were to be made to the general government budget in the current fiscal year, one option is not to fill several current open positions. The current full-time open positions are in roadways, buildings and grounds, water pollution control, and the assistant director in the library. Town council could also delay or eliminate the purchase of several items in the capital improvement plan budget. A copy of the current status of the CIP budget was included in your information packages for this meeting. Other operating cost reductions could be considered, however, these would most likely result in service reductions as well. My recommendation would be for the town council to either schedule a special meeting to discuss and determine a course of action, or appoint a subcommittee of the town council to report back in December with a recommendation. With your permission, I'd like to ask Representative Dr. Pettit to step forward and perhaps give an update on the latest things that may be happening in Hartford. They change almost more than daily. So with your permission, I'd like to...
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman.
Person.
Chairperson. I think Mr. Lee gave you a pretty good summary. We were really blindsided by the additional $91 million in cuts that were sent out by the governor on Friday afternoon. The good old-fashioned news release between 3:00 and 5:00 PM on a Friday. Because there had been agreement when the bipartisan budget was made, everyone's intent was to attempt to maintain as much ECS and municipal funding as possible, as possible given the fact that we were facing a total of $5.1 billion deficit. One and a half billion was obtained from some labor savings, the other three and a half would come from elsewhere. And a difficult situation because the fixed, for those who aren't aware, the fixed costs in the budget are somewhere between 40% and 55%, depending which account is a fixed cost, salaries, benefits, debt service, Medicaid, that gets you to the 50-55 range. So that's 11 million out of 20 billion. That means you've got to cut 3 billion out of the remaining 9 billion, which is 33%. The intention with all four caucuses with this budget, so for the people who aren't familiar with the jargon, the Senate and the House, Democrat and Republicans, all four groups agreed that the savings for the next two fiscal years, part of it to save money for ECS and for municipal grants, would come from targeted saving of lapses, human resources, multiple lapse accounts throughout multiple commissions, managerial consultants, purchasing processes, overtime, et cetera. Unfortunately, perhaps, that was not, that was discussed, the details were sent to the Office of Policy and Management, forwarded to the governor. He has chosen to make straight cuts that are now in line with his executive order, which is what we were all fighting against because of the fairly draconian cuts to ECS and municipal aid across the board. I can speak for our caucus. I spoke with a minority leader, Clarissa, this afternoon, and our hope is to, wow, there we go. Is to, we're asking for another session to go ahead and put this into writing and continue, to continue putting what we intended in, so there would still be a small cut to Plainville and a variety of municipalities around the state, but not as severe as, whether that happens remains to be seen, but we are lobbying for it. The ability to call a special session lies in the hands of the speaker, Mr. Erasimowitz, Representative Erasimowitz from Berlin, who also voiced his displeasure with the governor's decision and the two presidents pro tem, Senator Looney and Senator Fazano. They have both thought that we need to discuss this and come back, but have not come down on whether, from their points of view, that we'd come back in December or January before the short session starts in February. You know, we're in a tough situation. We've had probably 40, 40 years of overspending at times when the economy was good, and this is going to take some time to dig out of this hole. This compromised budget, though, I don't think is good as the first budget that was passed and then vetoed by the governor in terms of long-term structural changes, at least created a foundation going forward in an attempt to begin to fix the problem. We're somewhat hamstrung by the fact that the Seaback Agreement was passed in April that tied our hands in a variety of employment and benefit issues in terms of hiring freezes and the like. So I would tend to agree with Mr. Lee's assessment. Right now, the deficit may be growing somewhat because revenues are somewhat under what was projected, both in terms of tax and sales. A big part of it, you'll see different numbers out there, a big part of it is money that we are due from Medicaid that the federal government hasn't sent to us yet. Hopefully, that is forthcoming. But I think it's essential for, if you decide to have a subcommittee or a group to discuss this, that I think the council needs to be very conservative in estimating how much money may come forward, because even if we can restore this $800,000 to $1 million of cuts that came out last week, there may be more cuts forthcoming with budget deficit mitigation in 2018. So I think the town needs to be fairly conservative in its spending, because clearly there's not going to be an increase, and there actually may be further, further cuts. But we're going to continue to, speaking for myself in the House Republican Caucus, we are going to continue to fight to have an additional session to remedy this recent change from Friday that's in the 800, 900 million, I'm sorry, $80, $90 million range and costing Plainville about $1 million or so.
We know you're doing everything you can up there, and as these changes come out of Hartford, we're running out of time in our fiscal year. We're six months into our budget now, so it becomes more difficult to mitigate some of these things at this point without some very dramatic steps that probably are going to have to be taken. But thank you for coming tonight and sharing what you know, and I know you'll keep us informed as it starts to change yet again.
I will. When I get information, as I've done, I'll continue to forward it to you and Mr. Lee to share as necessary. And thank you. I am off to a four-year-old parent-teacher conference.
Those are fun. Have a good night. As was mentioned by the town manager, it would be probably prudent for us to put together a group of four council members to meet separately and talk about some of these situations and scenarios that are before us right now. I plan to be one of them, and so I would very much like to have two from the Republicans and two from Democrat representing. So if you can speak up now, because we don't have a lot of time to keep moving forward.
I'd volunteer.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll volunteer. And I would too, Kathy.
Okay, so Rosemary, Chris.
Yep.
Deb, and I'll be the fourth. Okay, thanks very much. We'll get out emails about when we're going to meet and all those particulars, but thank you for stepping up to do that. I appreciate it. Okay.
Next item I have is the renters rebate program. In addition to the reduction in state aid, the cities and towns will now be responsible for contributing to the renters rebate program. This is a program that provides reimbursement for Connecticut renters who are elderly or totally disabled and whose incomes do not exceed certain limits. Persons renting an apartment or room or living in a cooperative housing or a mobile home may be eligible for the program. This was a program created by the state legislature and funded 100% by the state budget until now. It is unclear at this time whether the renters rebate shift was included in the governor's holdbacks. If not, and based upon what we currently know, it could result in further reduction in state aid by anywheres between $22,000 and $52,000. Currently, Plainville residents who qualify for the program are receiving a total of $104,000 in renter rebate checks. Next item I have is the school buildings project update. Meetings continue to be held with the staff at the Department of Administrative Services regarding the Wheeler School project. These meetings are necessary because the current size of the school exceeds the space requirements for a new building. DAS has qualified the school for renovate-like new funding, over it was necessary to reduce the cost of the project below $450 per square foot. As a result, ONG has reduced the project cost by $705,000 to $22,805,000. DAS also confirmed that the project will be put on the priority list after some updated student projections are submitted. State budget included a bonding amount of $453 million for school construction authorizations for fiscal year 18 in Connecticut. And I also provided you with some correspondence that further explain some of those issues. Next item I have is the phosphorus upgrade project. Last Thursday, November 16th, a public information session was held on the phosphorus upgrade project for the water pollution control plant. A flyer describing the project and inviting residents to attend the session was included in all of the sewer use bills that were mailed on November 1st. Bond council has prepared the ordinance that would authorize the town to appropriate $15,761,000 towards the project. The next step would be to hold a public hearing on the bond ordinance. Town staff is recommending that this be held before the next town council meeting on December 4th. A referendum is currently planned for Tuesday, January 30th. There is an item on the new business regarding this recommendation. The next item is the Town Council Board of Education Joint Budget Meeting. The annual joint meeting between the Town Council and the Board of Education to discuss next year's town budget has been scheduled for Thursday, January 11th at 6:00 PM in the Plainville Library Auditorium. The purpose of this meeting is to give the Town Council and the Board of Education an update on the current year's budget and a preview of what is known regarding next year's budget. I would ask that you should please mark your calendars regarding this joint meeting. The meeting will be open to the public as well. Next item I have is dog park discussion. The Dog Park Committee has made a recommendation to utilize town land located at the Norton Place Extension for a future dog park. This location is approved by the Town Council. The Dog Park Committee will begin fundraising efforts to pay for the construction of the facility. The Town Council had previously discussed having a public hearing on the proposed location. Town staff is looking for a direction as to if or when the public hearing can be scheduled.
Shall we do, I'd like to ask the opinion of the councilors regarding a public hearing for the purpose of discussing a dog park in Plainville. Are you in favor? Do you oppose to that? Are you okay with it?
No, I'm in favor, yeah.
Yeah, Chris?
It's fine. Majority want to have this.
Shall we set that for sometime in January, or did you want to do it in a December timeframe? What do you want? Next month, first meeting or second meeting?
No preference. Doesn't matter.
Okay.
If you'd like, we could check our schedule and...
Let's, yeah.
Because I know we have a public hearing on the bond ordinance.
Correct.
At the next meeting.
Let's, let's look at what's happening in December, and if we can get it on the second meeting of December, that would be good. If not, most certainly the first of January, the first meeting in January. Okay, thank you.
Next item I have is temporary healthcare structures. Several months ago, the Town Council had a work session on Public Act 17-155 regarding temporary healthcare structures. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on whether to opt out of the new legislation. A list of the pros and cons associated with this new legislation was developed and reviewed by the commission. After the public hearing, remarked that in which there were no public comments, the P&amp;Z voted to opt out of the act and asked staff to begin preparing some regulatory amendments so that this could be addressed on a local level. To opt out of the act, the legislation requires a two-step process. The P&amp;Z actually completed the first step. The second step is for the Town Council to render their own decision by formal vote to opt out as well. There is an item in the new business should the Town Council wish to concur with the P&amp;Z recommendation. Next item I have is the opioid. We've entitled the opioid crisis. Several months ago, the town was invited to join a lawsuit with the city of Waterbury against the large pharmaceutical corporations to recover the monetary damages that Plainville has incurred to cover opioid-related healthcare and rehabilitation costs and to enable cities and towns to provide additional services needed by individuals and their families. The lawsuit is intended to begin the process of holding those responsible, accountable for the costs incurred by the cities and towns related to opioid use. Several cities and towns have joined Waterbury in this effort. Town staff has recommended participating in the lawsuit, which would not cost the town as it would be done on a contingency basis. Town council decided several months ago to delay making a decision on whether or not to participate in the lawsuit. If desired, town staff could arrange for the law firm to attend the town council meeting and to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
We'll get all these questions answered before you get to the end of your report. As Robert stated, this was proposed to the council a few months ago, and at that time there was no action taken by the council to become involved in that lawsuit. It would be no cost to the town, but if there was a settlement, which probably take a while to get there, the town may receive some benefit from it. I will, I will say that I would like to listen to the law firm that's going to, are these going to be the people actually bringing this suit?
Yes.
To hear from them, what their strategy is, what their, what their proposal is going to be, why they think this should happen, and if they're successful or not, how this would impact Plainville, before we go ahead and sign on to this. So that's my thinking. I welcome your thoughts on it as well.
Madam Chair, I think that would be very helpful as well for our purposes, but also for the purposes of our public, too, understanding the matter in more depth.
Anybody else? Okay with having the attorneys come in and talk to us sometime?
Yes.
As I said to Robert... Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt. The opioid crisis is a national, it's actually a worldwide crisis. It's not just in Plainville or Waterbury or Hartford. It's across the globe, and the solutions are going to be complicated, and it has to come from a lot of different points. So I would like to hear from the legal standpoint how that would be handled, and I think it's wise to have them come in and talk to us. So you can arrange that for us?
Certainly.
That'd be great.
The evidence certainly has shown that the pharmaceutical companies misled the public with regards to the addictive nature of these opioids and has greatly benefited by deceiving the public. I've got a couple of other items before we go to the financial dashboard. One is Royal Realty Memorandum of Understanding. The Economic Development Agency is recommending a tax abatement for the construction of a 22,000-square-foot addition to Walker Crane and Rigging located in the Farmington Valley Corporate Park. Royal Realty is the real estate arm of Walker Crane and Rigging. The EDA is recommending a 40% reduction in the assessment of the new addition for four years. It's worth noting that Walker Crane started out with a building with an original size of 33,600 square feet. The new addition, when completed, will bring the total building square footage on the property up to nearly 127,000 square feet, or almost four times its original size. There is an item on the new business regarding this recommendation. And the last, next item I have, which lasts until I turn it over to Scott, is JDA Lawn Sprinklers LLC, small business loan request. The EDA is also recommending a small business loan in the amount of $40,000 to JDA Lawn Sprinklers LLC to be used to expand their business and to hire new employees. The company is also seeking to apply for a matching grant through the state. The loan will be paid back over a five-year period with an interest rate of 2.93%. The EDA will secure a mortgage from the property owner by the recipients of the grant. And there is an item on new business regarding this recommendation from the Economic Development The financial dashboard was included in the information for tonight's meeting, as well as being posted on the town website. I've asked Scott to review the dashboard for this evening's meeting. I'd like to turn it over to Scott Hill. It happens after I as well.
Thank you. Hi, Scott.
Good evening. So far, the financial dashboard that I have runs through October 31st. Overall, for the town budget, through October 31st, we've spent $17.49 million, which is the equivalent of 29.61% of our total budget, which is slightly less than our two-year average, coming in at 33%. On the general government side of it, we've spent $9.5 million, which is 1% shy of our two-year average, coming in at 40%. Over in the Board of Ed, they've spent through October 31st, $7.9 million out of their $35 million budget. This equates to 22.4%. This is 5% shy of their two-year average, which comes in at 27%. The reason the spending is lower on the Board of Ed, it comes to some of the timing on when payments are made, as well as some of the more strict spending that they've been having over there. Going on to hauler tonnages, right now, we are over by 147 tons. Our two-year average comes in at 1,700 tons. Moving on to overtime for the police department, we've spent through October 31st, 55% or almost $250,000, which is roughly in line of our two-year average. The roadways department has spent $13,000 through October 31st, coming in at 19%. This is a lot less than two-year average. The two-year average is 46.4%, and this is due to the fact that the leaves are falling later into the season, so they have not had as many crews working overtime. Over in buildings and grounds, they've spent 77% through October 31st, which is higher than their two-year average, and this is due to the increased staffing at Balloon Fest and Pumpkin Fest, and we have not spent anything to date in the snow overtime budgets yet. And we have not spent anything to date in the snow overtime budgets yet. Looking at the revenues portion, we've received $26.8 million in our revenues through October 31st. This is slightly less than our two-year average. We've received 45.7%. And the reason this is lower is, as the town manager mentioned earlier in his report, that we will be receiving $1.9 million less in our funds from the state. The current taxes, we've received through October 31st $25.1 million. This comes in at 57.1%, which is slightly higher than our two-year average. And looking at the unassigned fund balance, as of June 30th, 2017, we came in at an estimated pre-final audit of $9.8 million, or 17.1% after allocating some of the funds for tax relief in the fiscal year 2018 budget, as well as the contribution to capital and the recent appropriation for the EverSource Energy Opportunity Program. The estimated unassigned fund balance comes in at just a little over $9 million, which is 15.4% of our budget. Moving on to the special funds, looking at the Recreation Department, through October 31st, they have spent $137,000, which is 53%. It's just a little over their two-year average. Looking at their revenues, they've received $91,000. They're right in line with their two-year average as well. The Robertson Airport, they have spent $77,000 to date. This is 85%, which is a lot higher than you see as their two-year average, coming in at 6.42%. And this is because the Finance Department posted an earlier payment in lieu of taxes in October rather than January. For the revenues of the airport, they've received $62,000, right in line with their two-year average. And the water pollution control expenditures, they've spent about $1.3 million to date, which is 40%, and that is slightly less than the two-year average coming in at 45%. The revenues they've received in to date are a little lower. They're $77,000, which is 1.95%. But now that the tax and sewer bills are out, we should be receiving all that money in the upcoming months. For the library expenditures, through October 31st, it comes in at $308,000, or 41.8%, which is a little less than the two-year average. And the revenues over at the library are $340,000, which is 46.1%, right in line with their two-year average. The Health Insurance Fund is over for the month of October, running $745,000. This is a little high. Over $258,000 over the expected claims. Our year-to-date is $2.4 million, while our expected was $1.9 million. And moving on to the major projects, there hasn't been too much happening. Over at the Park Improvement Fund that you see at the top, in October, some funds were released, working on some of the projects for the wood railing that was happening over at Norton Park. Some funds were spent over at the Turf Field Project as well. Nothing has happened over at Old Linden in the current month. For the road bond, about $9,500 was spent in October. This goes to some of the line painting on the recently paved streets. And then some funds were sent back into the special funds as money was unencumbered in the Cook Street Reconstruction Project and the Wheeler School Project. Nothing was spent this month in the phosphorus removal project or the Plainville High School Parking Lot Project. And that completes the financial dashboard, and now I'm going to move on to the happenings. Over in the Public Works Department, the Towns Transfer Station on Granger Lane will close for the winter season on Saturday, December 9th, 2017, at 3:00 PM. Leaf collection in the town of Plainville will continue through December 1st, 2017, weather permitting. Please be sure to rake your leaves to the curb line as early as possible. Be sure not to block sidewalks or walkways. Grass clippings will not be collected, only leaves, no sticks or stones. If your street has an island on it, please do not place the leaves on the island. Bagged leaves will not be collected at curbside. However, you can bring them to the drop-off center at the transfer station on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM during the months of November and the first two Saturdays in December. And they will be open Monday through Friday from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM for leaves only. Moving on to events over at the Senior Center, Thanksgiving Dinner is happening at the Senior Center on Thursday, November 23rd at 11:30 AM. The special meal is for the Senior Center members and any Plainville resident who is 60 years of age or older, who will be alone this Thanksgiving. Join them for a traditional Thanksgiving Dinner. Volunteers will provide transportation. For those who need a ride to the center, you must register in advance, and please let them know when you are registering if you need a ride. If you're homebound and would like to receive a dinner at your home, please call the Senior Center. There is no charge for the dinner, but donations are greatly appreciated. They're grateful to the Pines at Bristol for generously donating apple and pumpkin pies for their Thanksgiving Dinner. They are offering a free balance assessment by appointment only on November 30th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM, and on December 14th from 1:00 to 2:30 PM as well. Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents to help assist in lowering winter heating costs. For more information or to see if you're eligible, call the HRA Energy Department at 860-582-7490. HRA is taking over for the BCO and is located at the same address at 55 South Street, Bristol, and you must apply for this program every year. And they are hosting on Tuesday, December 5th at 10:30 AM their monthly Veterans Coffee Hour at the Senior Center, which is open to all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. They ask that you do call in advance to register for that. And the Plainville Fire Company will be hosting Breakfast with Santa on Sunday, December 3rd, 2017, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Plainville Fire Headquarters. This is a full family breakfast, open to all ages. The cost for adults is $8. For children between the ages of 6 and 12 is $5, and children under the age of 6 are free. And that's all I have to report on.
Robert, do you have the details regarding the downtown holiday events? I think they've been sent out sort of through, not the chamber. I don't think the chamber is coordinating that event this year. Do you have any details on that? I think it's Friday and Saturday, 1st of December.
My understanding is it's going to be Friday, the 9th? That's Friday?
I think the 8th is Friday.
I think it's the 2nd.
No, no. It's...
Okay.
And it's a downtown merchant that's doing it this year?
Right.
They switched it from Thursday to Friday? But I believe it's the 2nd Friday of the month, not the 1st Friday.
I don't have that information. I regrettably didn't get it. But could we, when we find out about that, could we put it on our website so if anybody's interested in attending? It's usually, you know, families with children come to the firehouse, Santa comes in on the sleigh, there's singing and all of those things. Could we do that, just so that information's out there, Scott? Thank you.
Yes, we can get that on the website.
Okay. Thanks very much.
The other thing is, I did have with me this evening Dave Emery and Dominic Moschini, Buildings and Grounds and Roadways. I know we had two items that were on the capital improvement program, one being the replacement of a truck at Buildings and Grounds, and the other, a loader backhoe for roadways. I brought them in this evening in case the Town Council members had any questions about either of those proposed purchases, which we have delayed in moving forward with until we, you know, we received some feedback from the Town Council. Not necessarily asking for a decision tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that they're here in case you have any specific questions about either of those purchases.
Does anybody have any questions for Dominic or for Dave Emery regarding their request in the capital program?
I don't.
No?
Not yet.
Any? No?
Sorry.
Save them up.
You know what they are, guys. It's just a matter of looking over some more numbers in a little more detail, because all of this, as you heard tonight, keeps changing from the state as to what our revenues are going to be. So, I'm sure those will be on the list of discussion when the group meets.
We had bid out the loader backhoe several months ago, and the, you know, the bid was, you know, according to our specifications, the low bidder was required to hold this price for 30 days. He did extend that, you know, understanding of our budget. I'm not sure that they'll extend that, you know, indefinitely, but just wanted you to know that it was, you know, kind of a clock ticking on at least that particular...
Could we ask them again just to wait a little longer? I'm sure that they have their business needs too, that they have to meet, and I understand that. But could we maybe reach out to them again and tell them, yet again, we've gotten another reduction from the state in terms of what we can expect revenue? So, we're trying to juggle all of those things? Can we...
Certainly can ask.
Try once again?
We certainly can ask.
Okay. That would be wonderful. Does anybody have any questions for Robert with his report, or Scott with our financial dashboard and his happenings that he reported on tonight?
No.
Everybody's all set? Good. All right. Moving on. We're moving on to our public comment section of the meeting. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. We did have a sign-up sheet, so I will ask Catherine Labella to come to the podium first. Name and address, Catherine, and then anybody that wishes to speak after that will given that opportunity.
I'm wondering if this is working.
Oh, that sounds good. Better than ours.
Catherine Labella, I'm a property owner at 50 Pier Street. I oppose a trail that conflicts with your commitment to constituents contained in the town's plan for conservation and development. The principles guiding Plainville's plan are intended to improve residents' quality of life. It includes such items as preserving critical environmental areas, preserving open space and natural beauty, and protecting and managing residential neighborhoods. It identifies our steep slopes, ridge lines, watercourses, wetlands, 100-year floodplain, special habitat areas, and wellheads as areas needing protection. It recommends that floodplains, streams, wetlands, and rights-of-way be excluded from any buildable portion of any parcel. P&amp;Z is charged to work with the Inland Wetland and Watercourses Commission to establish a policy of no net loss of wetlands and to ensure that all wetlands and the adjacent upland streams are maximally protected from development. The Commission is charged with developing a policy for no net loss of vernal pools. P&amp;Z is charged with limiting development in floodplains. Yet, this trail goes near streams through wetlands, through portions of the floodplain, and portions of the aquifer protection zone. Hey, you have heard from Holly Berry Lane residents that the proposed path, as well as a proposed development, will affect wetlands and spawning pools in their neighborhood. Worse yet, you have heard that the proposed path directly impacts the Mule Hall Trail, an historic piece of Plainville's heritage. According to the principal planner for gap closure, it may be possible for the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail to go onto the path, or it may be left in place as a historical amenity. Soil samples and stability, rather than Plainville's heritage, will be the deciding factor. Pier Street, with its historic center, many older buildings and older homes could benefit from plan recommendations that include zoning regulations and/or village districts to preserve historic structures and help property owners receive tax incentives. The plan recommends advancing zoning amendments that preserve scenic streetscapes where new development is proposed. A concern listed for older residential areas is that they are at risk of being converted to commercial use when incompatible industrial or commercial uses are allowed to encroach. An objective for P&amp;Z is to review regulations for effectiveness in mitigating such land-use conflicts. Pier Street residents contend that the proposed development of this trail, while not technically considered commercial, presents a worse conflict by disrupting the privacy and safety of residents, interfering with the use of our properties, and using land maintained by property owners for over 30 years. Where is our neighborhood protection? There are alternatives. The available funds could be used to develop a safe off-road option on Farmington Avenue, allowing for the business access as the town wants. Finally, I'd like to comment on Pier Street becoming one-way.
Catherine, your time has expired. If you could, within 10 seconds, wrap it up, that would be appreciated.
That would be great. Okay. I just wanted to say that we were told by the consultant after our September meeting that Pier Street was once again under consideration for one-way. So, there's conflicting information we're hearing from the town and from the consultant, both members of the same team. If we're getting conflicting information, how can you even take a vote on this vague plan at this point? Thank you.
Thank you. We seem to be having audio problems. Could we have the residents speak on that microphone? Is that any better?
I would ask that you take maybe a five-minute break. Dave is here, maybe you could...
Okay. Five-minute recess, everybody.
Okay, sure.
To fix it. Audio problems.
You're fine.
Thank you. We'll continue on with our public comments. If you would, please use the microphone over here. It seems to be a little more dependable when you come up to make your comments. I'd appreciate it. Catherine Labella was the only one to sign up, so if there's anybody that didn't sign up that wishes to speak to the council, Roberta.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perron Road. Good evening, and thank you for your time, and congratulations on your recent election. For the benefit of Carol and the minutes, I would like to reiterate what I have said numerous times before, as well as to the new Town Council members. I oppose any trail or alignment that will have an impact on any neighborhood in this town, including Perron Road, Johnson Avenue, and the back of the homes on the even side of Perron Road. At our last Town Council meeting, I expressed that I sincerely hoped that during the upcoming Steering Committee meeting that was held on October 18th, they would address how they would make the trail safe for our community, and most importantly, our children. I went to that meeting on October 18th and was very disappointed. It was very controlled and one-sided. The entire presentation was focused on benefits to users. Not 10 seconds was given to discuss the benefits to citizens of this town, businesses of this town, or taxpayers of this town, or the safety for the people of this town. I placed a phone call to the CRCOG Planner, Tim Malone, on that Friday, asking about this. As of this evening's meeting, I have yet to get an answer on this. I never thought that would be a difficult question or comment. Since that meeting in October, there was a shooting on the trail in Hamden. It was just a few hours before you came here to be sworn in. That young man died six days before his 19th birthday. For the benefit of new Town Council members, as I have stated before, at some point, you will be asked to vote on proposal regarding this subject. This may be considered one of the most important votes you make for the residents of this town. Your vote will have an impact on our town and residents for years to come, more than likely generations to come. If you are asked to vote on anything that is not a real and true rails-to-trails as people know this project to be, there should be a unanimous bipartisan vote of no. If there are no rails, there should be no trails. Thank you for your time. Happy and safe Thanksgiving to you and your families.
Thank you, and same to your families. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Thank you very much. Kathleen Cook, 62 Pier Street. 21 years I've lived here, and I chose Plainville, and I'm sorry, but what she said, a shooting? That just upset me. I apologize. Okay. I didn't know that until today.
Could you talk into the microphone? We're having a little difficulty here.
21 years I've lived here, and I chose Plainville because I heard it was a great town, and they really care about what people say. I don't think it's going to be safe. I don't understand why Pier Street, we have the most amount of residents with all those condos who are going to be so inconvenienced with this one-way. But safety is much more of a concern right now. I don't understand why they wouldn't bring it down West Main Street and Whiting, because that would benefit businesses, which is what we're all, everyone's trying to do downtown. Plus, it would be much safer. And I lived near the train, by the way, right next door to the train, 21 years. We have an active trail, very active, only an active train, only in the last two years. That's when they really got going on this Rails for Trails, really full force, and the train is like, oh yeah, we'll show you how active we are. They're very active now, but it wasn't for the last, only in the last two years it became very active. I just want to make that a point. I could barely hear it ever in the first 18 years. But the safety I'm very concerned about, trash, trash coming over, and who's going to maintain the trash? And, you know, the folks that don't pick up after their dog. It's, I just don't think the trail should go right through a very, very, very busy residential street that has one of the most residents on it. a very, very, very busy residential street that has one of the most residents on it. And I do thank you. I hope they'll take strong consideration. It seems like we have a lot of good points. Why to put it somewhere else and not right down our street? Thank you very much, Pier Street, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I just wanted to, if I can, make just a note that a couple of people have alluded to making Pier Street a one-way street. That has not been decided. That nothing has been finalized, so I just want you to know that. No, it hasn't been decided. Nothing has been decided to that extent. Nothing has been decided. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am.
Happy Thanksgiving. My name is Candace Hall. I live at 113 Shuttle Meadow Road in a part of Plainville that is an alternate universe, where a stop sign is not, does not mean stop, and is merely a suggestion that the passing drivers might want to take into consideration as they was around the corner. I would like to know, with all the problems that the state and the town are having with reduction of funding, what that means for the renovator's new status of the Wheeler School.
Well, the town manager gave a report earlier this evening. Were you here to hear that?
Yes, but I would like to, do we have to pay, does more money have to come out of our expenses?
Well, the project has been reduced in order to meet that qualification from people of Department Administrative Services. The project has been reduced.
Yes, but if...
In order to qualify for the grant, which we are seeking, we have done what they've asked. There has been no final decision right now as to how this is going to end up. We're still waiting to hear.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about, and is, what is the status of monies that the town has spent for studies?
What's the status of the monies?
Yes, will that continue?
They've been spent in order to keep the project moving along.
Yes, and is there more money anticipated that will have to keep the project along?
Not to my knowledge. At this point, no, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos? Yep, you'll be next. You'll be next. Go ahead, Lou.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. Congratulations to the newly elected. Starting off with the, earlier in the meeting, because of the funding reductions, there's going to be a group of the town council put together to sit with the town manager and look at funding. Will that be open to the public?
It won't be, no, it won't be.
These meetings.
It probably won't be, but we will have to bring back our report, obviously, to the public.
Okay. Will that be also in a printed format? Not just verbal?
Our report?
I'm a slow learner, and sometimes it's difficult to hear in DM.
No, you're not, Lou. Don't say that. You're not a slow learner. Come on.
No, no. Well, hey, that's the way it is. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. I just like that something in black and white.
Whatever ideas or suggestions that come out of that little subcommittee will be presented in a public format, and everybody will hear it.
Okay, so in other words, there will be no print?
We don't know, Lou.
Okay, moving right along. This is just a general question for myself. We have a lot of comments every meeting on this rails-to-trails business. Is Plainville committed to this thing in some way? If Plainville decided to say, "Look, we don't want to go into this project at all," are we committed, forcefully committed into this thing? So we can't say to whoever's in charge of the whole bailiwick that Plainville has decided to drop out? Can that be done?
That's certainly an option.
Thank you. The next thing here, I noticed on our financial dashboard, which ties into why I like a printed report, and this is just, again, for Louie's general knowledge. The Plainville High School parking lot, the funding is available, $1,007,000, and so far, nothing has been spent. Is there a timetable when this will be worked on?
As soon as we get the funding approval from the state, and I don't know what the timeline is for that. Robert, do you have other information?
Well, that is just spending funding from the state for the parking lot program, for the parking lot. So that's going to be designed over the winter, with the hopes that it could be bid and done next summer.
My mistake. That's a separate, it's part of what we voted on, but there's no state funding, so.
And again, just help me with this one. The reduction of the state funding for the Wheeler School. I'm going to be honest with you folks, I'm not clear on this. Has any of those two numbers changed? The grant, has the grant been reduced from the state? That's about paramount in my mind.
Not to our knowledge, no.
Not to our knowledge, okay.
As far as we know, at this point, that's not...
At this point, we're running just as we were a month ago. Thank you. And the, let's see, if I got the final one. If I may offer a suggestion, or a thought, to the town council. And this has to go back, I mentioned at a prior town council meeting, I went to a BOE meeting, and I followed their agenda. And I have to be totally honest with you, their agenda is, at least from a resident's, this resident's standpoint, is more explicit to exactly what happens in those meetings. Point being, one is, that I brought up and I'm bringing up again, is we have, they have liaisons. Every meeting...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Every meeting, liaisons report. If there's nothing to report, the liaison will say that. No one else says it but the liaison. We don't seem to have that here. And I wonder if there's any way that could be adjusted accordingly. That's just a suggestion. I'm not asking you to do...
Understood. I think that the liaison assignments for this council have not been made yet. They've been sent out, but people are looking at the list and deciding what is of interest to them, so they have not been assigned yet. Liaisons do often report back when they go to their meetings, and they bring back information. Sometimes, there's nothing really that comes of a regular meeting, so we don't always get information back. But oftentimes, there are reports that come back from our liaison assignments, so I think to say they never do it is inaccurate, Lou. I know that sometimes some don't have anything to report, but...
Well, they mentioned that even in the BOE.
Right.
Nothing to report on the meeting, and that's the way it was, period. It's over. And what I'm presenting is, to be candid about it, sometimes I like to see more involvement with the town council, and that is no disrespect to the town manager. But there are some projects that are discussed, and it's the town manager doing most of the talking. And I sometimes sit there in the back of the room saying, gee, do we all understand what's going on here? I, for one, at the time, get very confused. And I'd be, feel a lot better if I felt my town council was with me. Understanding. And finally...
We'll try to talk more. We'll try to talk more. I can't guarantee that. We'll try.
All right. No. With respect.
Of course.
Okay, and the final thing on citizen comments. One of the things the BOE does, and I'm wondering if we can do this, it's broken down into two segments. The first segment is example what I'm doing. I present my case to town chair, chairwoman in this case, or if it need be, one of the town council members. What the BOE also does is, there's, if I were to direct something to you, Madam Chair, and you give me an answer, if it was the BOE meeting, they have a segment here, the response to my question, and it's in print. Can that be done here?
Well, sometimes those responses don't come until the subsequent meeting from the Board of Ed. They wait to give an answer until they have all the information. Having been the liaison for the past eight years, I understand how their agenda is set up. I understand how they manage all of that information. That is on there so that the Board of Education members, who have a question posed to them, have an opportunity to gather the information, and they will often answer it at the next meeting.
I think that's wonderful.
I do, too.
And that's, in fact, that's what I'm looking for here, and not to make more work for Carol.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Happy Thanksgiving, Lou. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you wait just a moment? I promised this lady over here. Your turn. Sorry.
Hi. My name is Carrie Zach, and I live at 87 Hollyberry Lane. And I've been a Plainville resident for 34 years, 26, I think, living on Hollyberry. And that's, the proposed preferred path is right at the end of my property. The canal borders my property. And my backyard is not that deep, so it's maybe 60 to 70 feet from my house to the canal. And the thought of the bike path going right at the end of my property is just so upsetting. You know, it would take away any privacy we have. And we were told when we bought the house that there's wetlands there, and nothing could ever be built there. But a bike path can be. And I would almost rather, like, one or two homes are so there, because then you know it's a single family, you know who they are. I'm afraid it's going to be an extension of the park, because from my house, the park is diagonal. I live like five houses down from the bike, from the path that you could walk to where the pool is. And it's, I'm afraid it's going to really become an extension of the park. And already, you know, people hang out down there. And I'm just kind of concerned with, you know, more people hanging out down there. That, and, you know, the privacy, and, you know, just taking away the view of all the beautiful trees, you know, because we love to sit out there. I know that's kind of, you know, just a personal thing. Maybe it's selfish. But my request would be, could the path be pushed into, you know, like, could we have a buffer of perhaps 100 feet or so of woods, if that could happen? So that's, that's my request.
Okay. Thank you. We'll certainly keep that on our list of things.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Joel Edmund, 63, Hollyberry Lane, Plainville, Connecticut. I want to again express my dissatisfaction of the way this trail gap closure is so wrong for the town of Plainville. But first, I feel the need to express once again my sympathy and condolences to the Holcomb family, the Plainville Police Department, and Plainville townspeople that were around that fateful night 40 years ago, to the exact day today, three hours ago, that Officer Holcomb was gunned down and executed by a burglar who openly expressed his desire to kill a cop, from what I have heard. Pow. Pow, pow, pow. The gunfire was seen by another resident. At the time, Plainville and the surrounding area had been burglarized over 400 times, and they could not be caught or apprehended. They had it down to a science. The rest of this story has been in the newspapers, so I'm not going to dwell on any of that. But I witnessed it all, and it was a terrible tragedy. However, last Monday, a person was shot twice on the trail in Hamden. There wasn't too much local news on that. Also, three years ago, in Simsbury on the trail, Melissa Malan was stabbed to death as she was running, and it is still a cold case. The murder is still large out there somewhere. Now getting me back to the point of my dissatisfaction of the way this trail gap closure was presented to us at Plainville High School. The marketing of this, similar to a vacation timeshare presentation, was skewed. Number one, it is not 98% off-road. It's more like 80% off-road, negatively impacting roads and neighborhoods. Secondly, because we can't use the perfectly straight, cleared, and already based-out active railroad bed, which, by the way, is 3.05 miles from Northwest Drive to Town Line Road, they claim what is 84 miles is actually 86.3 miles because of the alternative passage. The presentation was flawed due to not being able to suggest a cost to the nearest million. But they did acknowledge that the tunnel and conduit under Route 72 was estimated at $2 million. About 100 feet long. On walking, on walking out of this October 18th meeting, people were saying, what a dog and pony show that was. People who wanted to express their views were not called upon. Only eight people. The rest were told to talk to representatives at separate tables, who were not taking notes. Only one lady expressed a positive feeling about the trail. Someone even suggested that she was a plant. Now getting me back to what I want to express, and I hope that I won't be interrupted again like it was at the last town council meeting, referring to the three-minute rule.
Mr. Edmund, your time is expired. Sorry. You have 30 seconds, though, if you can sum up what you'd like to say to us.
There are people in the town of Plainville who truly care about what happens here. For instance, my sister Joanne and John Kisslock. They are often shut down, while others can go on and on for much longer. When you think about it, we already have sidewalks, roads, and bicycle markings, and actually already have a trail through town. It's called the Blue Trail, over the mountains on the east side of town, great for hikers and mountain bikers, and its cost was practically zero. Just because you hear, "I want it," does not mean you need it. Reminds me of my little kids years ago. Show some mindful restraint. We don't need this trail through town. The skate park is a good example. You use it maybe one or two times, and that thrill is gone. Plainville is not Disney World. Are unpaid volunteers going to be able to construct the bridges and boardwalks, et cetera? Or is this another case of paying the inflated cost of prevailing wage? Eminent domain? Is any of that expected? This is by no means a nature trail or an escape from civilization. As town council members and town manager, I cannot understand how you could have the unmedicated gall to even consider this proposed trail gap closure, not even having an idea of the cost, but also the neighborhood upheavals that this will cause them. And when you say, "I want to hear more before I make up my mind," why do you limit the time and shut down people who oppose the gap? Common sense may not be so common. Will the trail close down at sunset, like Norton Park, or will people be able to hang out there, too? Does everybody want me to stop again?
Mr. Edmund, all the other speakers observed the three-minute rule, and I even gave them a little more time, so I'm asking you to be fair. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I get the picture.
Joanne, you're out of order.
Yes, please.
You're not at the podium, Joanne. You haven't been called up yet. You're not at the podium, and you haven't been called up yet. Please sit down. Thank you, Mr. Edmund. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Marilyn?
Make sure you raise your hand first.
Would you prefer that I use that microphone?
This one, please. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and residents of Plainville.
Marilyn, could you lower that so it's more of your speaking?
Hi, everybody.
Better.
My name is Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street, Plainville. Can you hear me? Okay. I'll be brief. I have a couple of issues. One is, I did go to the meeting about the rails-to-trails. I went open-minded, thinking, well, maybe I've misread this whole thing. And yet, I've heard so much common sense from the people in Plainville. When I went to the Rails-to-Trails meeting that you had in October over at the high school, I was amazed, first of all, at how many out-of-town people there were, and how few local residents there were. People behind me, there was one person that was from Plainville, and at least five others that were definitely from out-of-town. I was also... I was also amazed, because I was one of those six people that got to ask questions, to find out that part of that trail was going to, a proposal to go and build a culvert to the tune of $2 million-plus dollars. This is a lot of money. We're having big financial issues. Oh, and by the way, that culvert is in a flood zone that they're planning on, okay? And it floods in that area every spring. So, you know, we, we need to think about where our money is going and, and why. I don't understand why we have this need, why we feel as though we just have to have this. It's okay to be different. We don't have to follow every other town. We can say, no, it's really quite all right. And again, especially when you think about the financial issues. And the upkeep on it, who's going to take care of that and all of the money involved there? And the other one is the dog park. Do we really need a dog park financially? I don't think we can afford that either. Again, the upkeep, and who's going to go around cleaning up all of the waste on these trails? We have people right here in town, I see them every day, walking their dogs. It's not a problem. Anyway, I have one last issue and I'll wrap it up. And that is, tonight, we have quite a few people here, and fortunately, at a lot of the recent meetings, we've had a number of people get up to speak. But there are times when we only have three or four people here. And I'm respectfully requesting that you might want to consider extending our speaking time to five minutes. We do bring up important issues, and, and I'm requesting, if you have a smaller group of people, please consider extending the amount of time that we're allowed to speak. Just, just for both of us, I think that it would create a lot less stress overall. Okay? Thank you for your time, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Same to you, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? John?
Feel more comfortable over here.
We can't hear you. You've got to go over here. Over here. John, come on.
Afraid of that corner.
Over there. Over there.
John Kisselak, sixty-five Forestville Avenue. First of all, I'm glad to see that most of you found your way to the council chambers. I was a little worried about this after thirty-five days of not having a meeting, but most of you made it, so that's good. My other comment, I couldn't join you again this election. I only got one hundred and forty-four write-in votes, but I was really happy with that. That's quite a bit. From what I heard, nineteen ninety-one was the last time we had a write-in candidate, and they must have forgot to write for thems, write in for themselves because they got zero votes. So, it was, it was a pleasure to try to be a write-in candidate. Now, on the budget, with Plainville receiving one, one point nine million less, you know, I can't figure out what kind of formula the state uses for this for Plainville because I did a little research, these figures might be a little out of date. But our per capita is less than thirty-three thousand a person, and that's less than the state average. And we have a five point one percent below poverty level in Plainville. So that, there's something wrong with that. But as far as, I know you have to have your group and work on this, and I saw, I liked some of the things I heard that, you know, you're going to reduce some capital or this or that, or items in the budget. But we still have a $9 million undesignated fund balance. We just spent a million on, on the boilers and, and whatever forever source. And a lot of that money in there, in that undesignated fund balance, came from our final payments on the school projects, I believe. So my suggestion, to be fair to the residents of this town, you should take anything else we need from their fund balance. We still will have $7 million, and take it from there and see what happens. But that's the fairest thing to the taxpayers, instead of trying to have another assessment or, or whatever you want to call it. That, that's my opinion. I'd like you to look into that, your, your group that's been formed. I think most of it should come from that undesignated fund balance. Now my other thing is, TILCON again. I'd like to have this council, as individual members, look up sometime Meta Comet Ridge on a computer. According to what I found, in nineteen ninety-five, state law allows towns to restrict development on the Meta Comet ridges. I guess that's the law that TILCON wants changed. And, okay, maybe, maybe I went wrong.
Not going to go over the bridge.
Okay. Any, but part of that law, I believe, is any new quarrying operations are to be restricted or prohibited. Existing quarries will not be affected. But here's another thing I found. On Earth Day, April twenty-second, nineteen ninety-eight, seventeen towns signed an agreement called Meta Comet Ridge Conservation Compact to protect from overdevelopment. And it's, that's not only just houses. It was a voluntary agreement to preserve the trap rock ridges from the Massachusetts bordered Long Island Sound. I'm going to give you the name of the towns. Merton, Durham, Berland, Simsbury, Middletown, Farmington, Branford, North Branford, Guilford, East Haven, Wallingford, Middlefield, Plainville, West Harford, Avon, Avon, Suffield, Bloomfield. I'd like to have the council see, I couldn't find what that pact said, but this is something this council should look into, see what that pact was, and Plainville signed it. Maybe without us objecting to this TILCON project, maybe we'll be in violation of that pact. And I think that's something I'd like to have the council look into. There's, there's a lot of information about this trap rock, how they're trying to push now because they know the lifetime of these things is limited. And TILCON has a big plant in Branford now, too, and, and they're, they're really pushing to, to push out this rock. But if you, if you look into the, the history of this stuff, how this was made, and how important this is to our aquifer and stuff, you're going to be surprised, you're going to see that. That stuff should not be touched. I mean, it goes back to Jurassic days and all this stuff. You'll get a geology lesson that's, that's unbelievable. So I'd like this council to look into that for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't? Joanne? Joanne? Over here.
It's got some, some life in it, but.
Yeah, they're, they're not doing well tonight.
If you have a problem with the microphones, the system is in order, I would say. And Beasley bought that for a long time.
We'll check our money on that, Joanne.
Got millions to just spend on the schools, but no new system. Joanne Edman, one sixty-six West Main Street. Is that going to come through all right?
Talking to the mic.
Well, anyway, you can hear my voice, and I'm going to start with, my brother has a lot of common sense, a lot. Common sense would dictate that you would put this trail gap closure on hold until the railroad through the town outlives its usefulness, and then, and only then. So, now, I'm going to continue where my brother left off, and these will be his words. Because there'll be times when it'll sound like it, in my estimation. This is, in his words. "The trail gap closure, in my estimation, is also a waste of taxpayer money. Environmental destruction, wildlife interruption, and hundreds of adult trees to be removed through impacted wetlands by invasive equipment. But to put so many homeowners along the way to become negatively impacted is a sinful expression of how the local government feels towards them." Town manager of Avon, Brandon Robertson, said, "We try to be very careful any time we are dealing with someone's property. Now is the time to put aside this nonsensical idea of pushing a trail through established neighborhoods and roadways. This trail will be forever. Not so for railroads. Put this trail closure on hold until the railroad's three point oh five mile straight line through Plainville outlives its usefulness, like the other eighty-one miles that converted over to the trail. The real nice thing about using the existing railroad bed is that it does not need clearing of trees, and the base is already there. I have been told that expensive repairs have already been done to other parts of the trail going north. Stone dust washes away, blacktop cracks and breaks up, wood rots, and even concrete cannot be trusted to last forever. Taxpayers will be on the hook for the repairs after donations dry up. This trail will be forever, and if not, the demolition will also be expensive. For example, the Linden Street School fiasco. I noticed the recent excursion down Broad Street of the town manager and several council members escorted by three other townspeople in green safety vests. What they did not see was all the vehicles that park on both sides of the street for five o'clock mass. They also did not attempt to view the historic Mule Hall Trail or many other impacted neighborhoods. Thousands of adult trees are also in the way of this proposed trail passageway, maybe also telephone slash electric poles. Is it the plan to cut them all down with invasive equipment? Time has a way of changing things. Perhaps when the railroad in Plainville has outlived its usefulness, it would then be a more viable time to take another look at the idea of rails to trails through Plainville. If and when that happens, it would be too late. The damage to all the homeowners and vehicles impacted by this brainstorm of an ulterior way to get through Plainville will be done. It's sad, so sad.
Okay, thanks, Joanne. Your time is up.
So bad.
Your time is expired.
No rail, no trail.
Okay.
Oh, for goodness sakes, Kathy. Can't I get a, you know, you're as bad as, what's his name down there?
I knew you'd pick me in there somehow, Glenn. You missed me thirty-five days.
You did it last time. I told you. Not to, not, don't ever do it again.
I knew that was coming. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
David Spencer, one twenty-seven Milford Street Extension. Is there a referendum scheduled for January concerning the water treatment plant?
There is. We haven't set that, but that will be coming.
Can I ask why? I mean, if, if it's a mandate that we have to do it, what, what is the point of having a referendum? Why, why, why the expense and trouble to go through a referendum if we're mandated? I mean, if we get ten thousand votes no and zero votes yes, do we still have to go through with it? I mean, what's the point?
Well, we have to have a public hearing in order, and a referendum as per charter in order to spend that amount of money. So we're required to do that. We're required to do that.
Okay, well, that sounds a little silly, but what are we going to do?
Well, unfortunately, as you know, this project is not a project that the council has decided to do. We are being required to do it by federal and state authorities.
Yeah, so I mean, what's the point in take, you know, there doesn't seem to be any point in doing a referendum.
I understand. It's a procedural matter that we must go through in order to get this done.
And if we vote it down, what happens?
Beg your pardon?
If we vote it down, what happens?
Well, we're probably going to be severely fined by the federal government, and it's going to happen, but at a greater cost to the local taxpayer, much greater cost.
I don't know, maybe we can do a little rewrite on the charter if that's the, you know, on the.
Not at this point in time, we can't do that right now.
Okay, my second point is, I used to work for a company for maybe ten, twelve years. They shut down maybe nine years ago. They had office and warehouse space on Summer Street in Southington. We parked some trucks there in, in the yard, and while I was working there, there was an active train track behind the, the buildings. Then all of a sudden, they started tearing up the tracks, they laid down the asphalt, and suddenly I had a new job. Every few months, it was my job to grab the bucket of, the container of acetone, rags, and brushes, and do my best to get the spray paint off of the trucks. We also couldn't keep anything valuable in those trucks anymore because of break-ins. We would call the Southington Police, they'd come out, they'd make the report, and they never caught anybody. I don't know what the end of this trail thing is, but I don't see how you could possibly, if you're responsible people, have it anywhere near private property. That asphalt trail became just a nice, quick, convenient path for mischief makers and thieves. And, I mean, if you put this anywhere near people's private property, you're just asking for trouble. So wherever it ends up, I, I implore you that you don't have it anywhere near private property because it's the way of the, the world today, and there are plenty of thieves and mischief makers out there with spray paint and tools that will cut locks off and hammers that'll smash windows. So just, I don't want anybody to have easy access like they did on Summer Street in Southington, to come in, do their trouble, leave, and never get caught. And happy Thanksgiving.
And to you as well. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not yet tonight? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. Moving on to the rest of our agenda, we have no old business before us, but we do have several motions under new business. I'll ask for, number one, motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to opt out of Public Act number seventeen dash one fifty-five and Act Concerning Temporary Healthcare Structures.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Acting as a water pollution control authority, motion to establish a public hearing for Monday, December fourth, twenty seventeen, at seven o'clock in the municipal senate to hear public comment on a proposed ordinance entitled Ordinance Appropriating Fifteen Million Seven Hundred and Sixty-One Thousand for Upgrades and Related Improvements to the Town's Water Pollution Control Facility and Authorizing the Issue of Bonds and Notes to Finance a Portion of Appropriation Not Defrayed from Grants and Proposed Project Referenced Therein.
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Acting as a water pollution control authority, motion to refer proposed upgrades and related improvements to the Town's Water Pollution Control Facility located at Cronk Road to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report pursuant to eighteen, I'm sorry, eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General State Statutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number two zero one eight dash zero seven, non-treated road salt under Connecticut State Bid number one seven P S zero one five six to Cargill, Inc. De-Icing Technology Business for the amount of fifty-nine dollars, fifty-nine cents per ton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to award bid number twenty eighteen dash oh eight, treated road salt under Capital Region Council of Governments Bid number six five six to D R V N Enterprises for the amount of seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents per ton.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Number six.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
A motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the memorandum of understanding for Royal Realty LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the small business loan for JDA Lawn Sprinklers LLC as recommended by the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Other discussions of interest. Do we have anything else to report tonight?
No, there are none.
Nothing? Anything from anybody? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody that took the time out to come here this evening. I hope you have a healthy and safe and happy, long, extended weekend.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you, Kathy.